Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. This is Tuesday, August 21st, 2018. If you have not already done so, I'd like to remind you to turn your cellphone to, well, turn it off or turn it to stun. We're returning from closed session. And Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. No, there was no reportable action.
Okay. If I can get one to rise for an invocation by Pastor Bernie Fetterman.
Let us pray. Dear God, I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here. Your power, your presence, your goodness and grace are almost more than we can comprehend. And for those of us who believe in you, we don't take for granted the freedom to call upon you, whether here, in a house of worship, in our homes, or wherever we are. We thank you that every one of us matters to you. This city matters to you, and you care more about it than any one of us ever could. Thank you for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, and for sustaining grace, and for our family and friendships that make our work enjoyable. And I pray, oh God, for our homeless and under-resourced population, and our cities' efforts to help them, to connect them with services they need, and to treat them with dignity. It is a huge undertaking, and no one of us in this room fully understands all that will be needed emotionally, financially, and spiritually. But we are aware, we don't have the funding, nor enough hands to make all this happen. So we pray for your provision, and your guidance, and for patience and understanding for all involved. Be with our police and fire departments, our city and county agencies, our faith-based groups, our nonprofits, and our citizens who simply want the best for all of our citizens. Give us increased compassion and capacity to realize the best possible outcomes. I pray for our mayor, our council, our city administrator, our police, our fire departments, various levels of city officials, and all our employees. I ask that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amid the difficulties and varied interests of our times, the wisdom in dealing with zone changes and city budgets right around the corner, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a pursuit of justice and righteousness, a confidence in what is best and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest and respectful disagreement, and personal peace in the lives of all these who serve us, simply because they decided to be servants. Give them strength in the midst of their weariness. And while we pray for ourselves, we remember those in other parts of our state who have been devastated by fires, and the damage caused to property, and even the loss of the lives of firefighters who simply lost their lives in service to others. And for the agenda set before this council, please give an assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city in Lompoc today and in the future. And it's in your most blessed name that I pray. And everybody said, if you choose, amen. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not a long one tonight. I've just been going out trying to meet with many different community members and organizations as possible. One note that we will have is, I'll be going with the police chief next week on August 28th to the Board of Supervisors. We're going to be going down and attending their board meeting to discuss the riverbed cleanup, and ask for as much physical and monetary help as we can possibly get from them for this very large task that's before us. That was the only one I had today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for City Manager? Okay, we're going to go into public comment on the consent calendar. Speak to us on anything on the consent calendar. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar. We'll move to consent. Consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered routine, and will be passed with one motion and one vote by the council, unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member wish to pull an item? Councilmember Starbuck.
I wouldn't like to pull an item, but Mr. Penoni, if you could clarify item two for me, please, normally a recusal.
Right. The reason the councilman's asking, because he has property within 500 feet of this parking lot, but there's a specific exemption for if all you're doing is slurry sealing or repair of like that, that there's no conflict and he doesn't have to recuse himself.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, item number three, just had simple questions. It seems a little bit more than something that's routine as a response back to the grand jury, but is that, my first time being involved with one, is that a customary, just to not have something, there's a lot of valuable information, I think, that Mr. Wilkie put forward there, but if that's customary, that doesn't need to be discussed any deeper. I would be, just think for the record, there's a lot of important information that was put out in there.
When we have done this before, we have put it on the consent agenda, and the council hasn't seen the need to pull it off, because it is there and it's available to the public to read.
Okay. Well, just call out to the public to read it. There's a lot of good information and response in there that was there, and I think Mr. Wilkie did a, and his team, I'm sure, and everybody else involved, did a good job coordinating and putting those responses in there.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to accept the consent calendar.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, we have a couple presentations today. Ms. Doubles, would you please step forward? We're going to give you one last chance to take your job back.
Thank you.
So it's with a lot of regret that Laura Doubles is leaving us. Good for her, bad for us. Laura has been with us for 14 years, and I'm giving estimation, but she's probably worked in, I'm going to guess, probably, oh, better than 50% of the different departments, probably more. Worked her way through many, many departments, ended up, and she's leaving us as a deputy city manager. So we're going to miss her a lot, but anyway, Laura, we have a plaque for you. It's presented to Laura Doubles, Deputy City Manager, July 27, 2004 to August 21st, 2018, in grateful appreciation of your dedication and personal contributions of time and effort to the city of Lompoc and its citizens. Thank you, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Give me a hug. Good lady. We're going to miss her. And now I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Everyone from Allen Hancock that's here, if you want to come up? Okay, so some of you may or may not have heard of the Allen Hancock Promise Program. If you have not heard about it, you will be hearing much more about it in the near future. And today, the city, in recognition of it, would like to read a proclamation. It's a proclamation from the city of Lompoc honoring the Allen Hancock Promise Program. Whereas Allen Hancock College has launched an innovative new program called the Hancock Promise, designed to change the odds for local Lompoc students entering college. And whereas the program is already living and having an impact within our community, resulting in six-fold increase in the number of high school graduates attending Allen Hancock College as a first-year student. In fact, 249 students from our valley alone will be among the first cohort of Promise students beginning the fall of 2018. And whereas, these students will join many alums in our city that have launched successful careers and become valuable community leaders, or others who have embodied the college's mantra of "start here, go anywhere." And whereas, Allen Hancock College's innovative approach to making college both affordable and accessible is now beginning in the fifth grade with a program called Bulldog Bound. And whereas, in its first year of implementation, Bulldog Bound already provided on-campus experimental learning activities to more than 2,100 fifth-grade and sixth-grade, sixth-graders within the district, and many more slated to attend this next year. Now therefore, be it resolved that on August 21st, 2018, is declared the Hancock College, the Hancock Promise Day in Lompoc, as this program truly illustrates our community's commitment and assisting students pursuing academic transfer careers and technical education programs. Deepest gratitude and thanks to our local donors, businesses, and educator, educational leaders, and organizations who have supported this program. We applaud the efforts of the college community and foundation leaders working diligently to help students experience their first year of free Allen Hancock College. Thank you very much.
Sure, of course. Sure, okay. You want to, if you're over there? You want to come over?
Yeah, and then I'll say something afterward. These are the important people. We'd love to have all the council behind you as well, council members, if that's possible. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Susan Houghton. I'm the Executive Director of College Advancement, and on behalf of Dr. Kevin Walters, our President and Superintendent, I want to acknowledge your proclamation today. I'd like to introduce just a couple of people to you. These are important people for you to know in your community, because they will be leading your children and your children's children as we go through the college years. And today is day two of our fall semester, and the inaugural class of Hancock Promise students are here. We have Dr. Bob Curry, who is our Vice President of Academic Affairs. And we have our Vice President of Student Service, Noemi Ornelas, who is a Lompoc native. And along with our fantastic board of our foundation board, we have Frank, and Tim, and Jim, and Rob, and where is everybody? Ken? Ken, over here. They are members of the Foundation Board of Directors, and Jim Fields is leading the Lompoc contingent for the Hancock Promise. You are the very first city to proclaim Hancock Promise Day, and I've got to tell you, other cities are following the lead, but you're the first. Day two, and you heard the number of the students who are coming. Last year, 88 students from Lompoc. That means it is a double the amount of local students from two high schools here in town going to Hancock as a result. We are committed to the Hancock, to the Lompoc campus. We're committed to your students. We're proud to be a part of this community, and we want to thank all of you, council, for your support on this very important occasion. And for those of you who like pizza, thanks to our wonderful partner in town, Wild West Pizza, tomorrow, they will be donating 50% of their proceeds to the Hancock Promise, and giving 100 Hancock Promise students their own personal pizza. It can't get better than that. So, thank you, Mayor, council. We're very appreciative.
And I'd like to propose a challenge. I have committed to support, my husband and I have committed to support a student for a year of promise to keep this going, and I challenge fellow council members in our community to pick up the brochure and look at how you can support a student for a year of the promise from Lompoc, and you can designate that your funding supports a student from Lompoc. So please look into this and please support it, because it is opening doors for our community that need to be opened and changed.
Thank you, Councilmember Osborne. That's very gracious of you. And in honor of your pledge to be a partner, we have Hancock Promise Partner Pins for all of you. So thank you again.
Okay, next, financial services staff will provide an update on our financial services system.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is a great week to report on what's going on with our unit system, because we're doing a week of training for all the employees on how to use the employee self-service, which is our employee time sheet type of process that's electronic. So all, a week this week, we have employees that are learning how they can enter in their time in the time sheet process, and what benefit it will give to them. They'll be able to see their information, their supervisors will be able to prove. So it's all kind of like a training that's going to happen, and we're going to go live with payroll for the October 5th payroll. And they'll be able to see their, when that happens, they'll be able to see their slip on the electronic site, and they'll be there, be available for them. So again, not only do we have that going on this week, next week, we're also doing our utility billing conversion process, where we've sent a file to Tyler and made sure that it can convert over to our new system for our utility billing. So that is very exciting. There's a lot of work that needs to go into that, and our utility billing process, we hope to go live in February or March. And that would allow our citizens to actually see their billing online, and it'll all be available that way. So that's what we're working on right now. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Starbuck.
When will the ability to pay online be there?
When we start going line, well, we can, you can pay online right now, so, but it'll be user-friendly in February and March. The first time we get a first billing processed in the system. So yeah, that'll be February or March.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For those of you that have not been following our computer upgrade, it's very exciting for the city, and should, and I think it's very exciting for the public. The system that we're currently using, 20 years old? 30 years old, okay. As you just heard, time cards were still all manual. Many of the people work off of three-by-five index cards at their desks. That's all, we're actually getting into the newer, is there a circle I'm ringing here? Okay, not just me, right? Okay. So anyway, we're very excited about this, and it's long overdue, but you can't even imagine the amount of work that the staff has been putting in to do this. I mean, they're doing their regular jobs, plus having to train, getting all the data put in for the new system. It's just amazing. So thank you very much for everyone that's involved in doing this. It's great for you. Thank you. Okay, oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on any item that can come before this council.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. A council member's suggestion, your role is to serve the recommendations of city staff, prompted a cursory analysis of city department expenses over a 20-year period of time, 1997 to 2017. The 1997 to 99 adopted budget was almost $101 million. Adjusted for inflation, that would be about $154 million today. However, the 2017 to 2019 adopted budget is $234 million, almost $235. That's an increase of over $80 million, or almost 53%. Local government has expanded almost 53% in 20 years. That's inflation has already been taken into account. Lompoc's population only increased 6% during the same 20-year period. How has this massive government expansion affected citizens? City parks are neglected, too hazardous for a range of activities. Park bathrooms are locked during scheduled activities. Main thoroughfares are neglected, trash, weeds, and dead flowers predominate. Businesses leave Lompoc regularly. Housing is unaffordable for the middle class. Crime and gang activity have increased. This massive local government expansion suggests itself serving at the expense of and detriment to its citizens. Mechanical smoothness in our elected officials created the pathway for this reversal of sovereignty. We need council members to move boldly with courage. Council members ask hard questions, make unpopular decisions which are in the citizen's best interest. Salvation of our freedom rests with you. You are our first defense against the tyrant banging on the door.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, staff, Alice Milligan, Lompoc Hospital Foundation. In preparation for the Lompoc Hospital Foundation Color-Thon, which we had planned to hold on October 20th, we took a drive out to our River Park. What we saw was appalling. What was once a beautiful park was like a third-world park. Grass has not been watered. It was brown. The walking trail was full of gopher holes, as well as large, deep holes. In some places, we cannot even discern where the trail is. It was nonexistent. This is an accident waiting to happen. The beautiful Vietnam Memorial is surrounded by overgrown weeds. In fairness to Mario Guevara, he did offer to have one of the park workers drag the walking trail, however, the trail is too far gone. As a result of these deplorable conditions, we've already lost a $2,500 sponsorship. And I suspect when the community learns of these deplorable conditions at River Park, and adding to the fact that the homeless will be evacuated to River Park, our tenants will be affected, and we have no choice but to cancel our event. As a longstanding member of this community, I'm saddened that our parks are in such horrible condition. Where's the leadership at City Hall that allows, ensures that these situations like this do not happen and continue to happen? I served as the coordinator to the renovation of the Lompoc Veterans Memorial Building. We were able to achieve at very minimal costs the complete renovation of this historical building. This is done on a very low budget, because we wrote grants and coordinated with the Bureau of Prisons. Why hasn't our city investigated some of these opportunities? These are certainly readily available to our city. As a result of this cancellation, I'm saddened that this event, which was looked forward to and enjoyed by our community, as well as enjoyed by those of us who put it on, we will have to forego income of over $20,000, which we could have allocated to the renovation of our community or our comprehensive care center. In addition, the city will lose over $1,000 of fees that we would have paid for the rental of the use of River Park. I hope that our new city manager will demonstrate and exert the necessary leadership, and take the steps to see that our parks and our city in general is put in a better light. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication, bring it back to the council. We have one item on the agenda tonight that is unfinished business. It is item number five, the second reading of ordinance number 1647-18, to approve a zoning change for the Community Health Centers project. And it's Mr. Halverson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and the community. I'm the planning manager, and we're going to go ahead and put the quick slide presentation. This will be short, because it's mainly just giving us an update on what has already occurred. Of course, tonight's the second reading of the ordinance. You already took action on the resolution to change the general plan for the Community Health Centers project. This project is off of West Ocean and U. You can see it highlighted in red there. On that site, this is the site plan that shows a approximately 28,000 square feet medical clinic that CHC would own and operate. Also, just want to focus your attention on what's known as parcel A. Although not approved, that would be a commercial use one day. Here's just the proposed developments and elevations. It looks like a two-story building. It's actually a one-story building. Again, approximately 28,000 square feet. That's what you would see from Ocean. Just to reiterate what occurred at the planning commission, the planning commission did recommend approval of a general plan amendment and zone change. They also approved a development plan for this project and certified a mitigated negative declaration, and they recommended approval that to the council. Now, the council did hear this project twice, once on March 20th and once on June 5th. At the March 20th meeting, that's when the council directed staff to come back with a pilot agreement. On June 5th, you heard the project again and adopted the general plan amendment, but you told us to come back with a revised pilot. We met with Community Health Center staff, which many of them are here tonight, and after that meeting, we came up with a revised pilot that they looked at, presented it to staff, then we made some revisions to that. I am happy to report that just recently, we contacted the CHC staff, and they agreed with the city recommended pilot that you see tonight attached to your council report. And just to really quickly summarize what that pilot agreement says, it would be property in lieu of taxes, $20,000 each fiscal year with a 2% increase each year. The agreement would continue until the entire commercial development, which I mentioned on that parcel A, fronting Ocean Avenue, is completed on parcel A. Just want to go back real quickly and show you that site plan. So this area right here, it could accommodate approximately 15,000 square feet of commercial space. And as part of the pilot, working with CHC, that would need to be developed, and not just developed, it would need to have a certificate of occupancy. And so not just a shell building, it was brought up that there was a building on East Ocean that got built, but it didn't get occupied. So it would need to be occupied, not just a shell, but they come in and do the interior improvements as well for a tenant. Lastly, these are the recommendations that are in your council report this evening to adopt ordinance 1647-18, by second reading, by title only, with further reading waived, approving a zoning change, a zone change from the medium-density residential planned development to planned commercial development for approximately 5.18 acre site at 1220 and 1300 West Ocean. Again, to authorize the city manager to sign one of the provided agreements for payment in lieu of taxes. So just to reiterate, it would just, there's just the one now, because in your council report, there's two. One that was offered up by CHC, and the one recommended by city staff. We agree on the one recommended by city staff, so you're really being asked for just that one. Or, of course, you always have the option to deny the proposed zone change and general plan amendment, or provide other direction to staff this evening. That does conclude the Planning Division's staff report and presentation. If you have questions, I'm available to answer those questions this time.
Any questions for Mr. Halverson? Councilmember Mosby.
So what happened to the one we asked you to go back and get, one that had the pilot money paid for as long as the project existed?
That's a good question. We did, they'll probably speak upon that. We did try, we were directed to go back and get, you know, as much as we could, and we talked to CHC staff, and this is what they would agree to. They wouldn't agree to any more than that.
I mean, that's what you were directed to go back with, not a five-year plan or anything? I think it was a four-one vote at council to go back that way, with that direction?
Well, there are a lot of things discussed. For example, there was perpetuity.
Yes.
They don't agree with that. They don't agree with that. So that's not part of the pilot. But they did, one of the things that was mentioned by some council members is that we wanted to see the front developed and so they agreed to enter into a draft agreement to present to you tonight that would basically allow, put them in a situation where they would develop the front. Then, once the front is developed and the back, of course, would go off the tax accessory rules, but then there would be tax money on the front.
I don't believe that's what you were directed to go back to do. I think you were directed to go back to get pilot in perpetuity of the project. I believe that's what the direction was.
Right.
So I don't, I don't think you went back to what four-to-one vote asked you to go do.
We did talk to them, Councilmember Mosby, we did go back to them and talk to them about that. And actually, we did mention in those meetings that that was the desire of the council. So I would like to assure you that we did mention the perpetuity, so.
And if I may, through the mayor, one of the attachments is the agreement that would be in perpetuity if that's what the council chose they wanted to do. Just understand that the CHC was not willing to sign it, but it's an option that you have if you want to go that way.
Any other questions? Councilor Mosby.
Which attachment would that be, Mr. City Attorney?
It's attachment number two.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Starbuck.
Yeah, one of the things that's a question here is this commercial properties in the front. What is it going to be? One building will qualify or there's no plan or no estimate of anything on the commercial properties, it's just a drawing?
That is true. When it went to planning commission, they only at the time were looking at the back. We don't know at this time. I think CHC might be able to give a little more information this evening. They did mention that they're already have a draft agreement with someone. I don't know who that is. So if they want to share that, that's up to them, but we don't know who the tenant will be.
Yeah, I mean, somebody could open up a thrift store, qualify it as commercial and ban. All of a sudden, pilot money stops, we get, you know, a minimal in property tax off the front and the project's done.
CHC, would you like to come and address this? Thank you, Mr. Halverson. And for the public, CHC's Community Health Clinic.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Pam Ritchie and I'm a planner with RRM Design Group and I'm representing Community Health Centers for the entitlements before you. And as Brian summarized, we are requesting that the council approve the second reading of the rezoning ordinance and support the revised pilot that the staff has drafted and is included in your packet as attachment four. And as Brian also mentioned, since the June fifth meeting, the CHC team met with city staff to discuss a revised document in the pilot terms. And so the CHC finds that the revised document as attachment four in your packet includes fair and acceptable terms moving forward. In summary, we agree to the $20,000 payment per year, the 2% annual increase in payments and the contract timeframe extending the certificate of occupancy for, until a certificate of occupancy for a non-tax exempt commercial use that's developed on parcel A. So as an update to the city council, the CHC is actively marketing the sale of parcel A. There's been a conceptual site plan that's been developed that shows two building footprints with parking that meets and exceeds the minimum requirements for a high-impact use such as medical offices and also provides five off-site parking spaces for the clinic. And we heard from the discussion at the past meetings that there are potential for compromise to the timeframe of the agreement being in perpetuity. And so we feel that what the agreement brokered with staff is a fair and equitable one that allows, requires the CHC to make these payments that increase annually until such time as that parcel A is developed again with non-tax exempt commercial uses. So that's the CHC summary for tonight and I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have a number of CHC employees and clients in the room that want to speak on behalf of the services that the CHC provides to the community.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open this up to the public. Public comment on this item. And if there's a lot of you'd like to speak, if you just sort of come around to the side and line up behind this gentleman.
Good evening, my name is Kent Parsons. I am not directly connected with CHC. I'm a patient there. And I agreed to come and speak tonight because of the need on my end to see that business continue to be able to grow. They have multiple medical facilities in that one location and do a very good job with it. But one of the things, and I'm only been a resident here of Lompoc for a little over a year, but one of the things I have seen and heard of its recent years is that many things, businesses and otherwise that used to be here, have dried up and gone away. And one of the things that CHC seems to be doing is growing and needing a bigger and better facility. And I would encourage you to keep in mind the impact that it might have on the long-term growth of the community to have this kind of facility here, that there would be fewer drives to other towns around that I have to do for my medical care from time to time as well. One other thing that I was not aware of until I heard the presentations was the in-perpetuity portion. I have no previous knowledge of it, just a thought that I will throw out there to consider is that you, because of the question about what kind of business might move into that parcel A, that you make the provision that the business, taxable business that moves in there has to meet or exceed the 2% growth. Just a thought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mayor, council, my name is Smiley Wilkins, Jr. I've been a patient with CHC for over 20 years. I've followed them from different locations and my own personal doctor, Dr. Gonzalez, has taken care of me for a long time, you know, with different medical issues, back surgeries and all that that I've had. Some of the staff that sit down in the audience, we've become great friends because of the service they give, from the time you walk in there to the time you go out, they just take care of you. I've referred many people here in Lompoc over the years to go to CHC. You know, we have other facilities we could go to with our insurance, but I choose and choose to refer, you know, CHC because I think the staff out there, you know, is just great. My own personal, Dr. Gonzalez, whatever needs you need, if he can handle it, he'll refer it out to somebody else. And then the staff makes sure that you get the referral and go on. I think if we had a bigger facility, brought in more doctors, brought in a bigger dental staff, and just more doctors, period, it would be great for the community. And, you know, I got to applaud them out there because they've been taking care of me for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Jack Barnes. I as well am a patient at CHC. I moved to this town approximately five years ago and I had quite a bit of medical care in South Orange County for about nine to 10 years prior to coming here. Without any question in my mind to add to the previous gentleman's speech, there is no comparison to the patient care that I've received here than anywhere else. Having, being on first-name basis with everybody from the front office all the way through to the back has been absolutely marvelous. I wouldn't change anything about it other than giving them the opportunity to expand that they're asking for. I'm behind it all the way. I mean, it's, it's, the only thing I can offer is my experience in all this and, but it's, it is pretty vast. So I appreciate everybody's time and please give it a consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. To enhance the health status of all people in the central coast of California with special emphasis on the medically underserved by providing accessible, affordable, comprehensive and quality healthcare services through well-trained professional staff in strategically located health centers, this is the mission statement of our Community Health Centers of the central coast. My name is Nicole Kumjohn and this October will be my fifth year employed with this company as a registered medical assistant. I have lived in Lompoc throughout the 26 years of my life, as well as most of my colleagues. Being in the medical field is something I carry with passion and also something I take great amount of pride in. Each and every one of us take part in helping our patients with their medical health, whether it's our physicians, medical assistants, healthcare care managers, receptionists, phlebotomists. We work as a team to deliver the best health we can and provide. Supply and demand defines as the amount of a commodity, product, or service available and the desire of buyers for it considered as factors regulating its price. The demand for healthcare right now is tremendous. Our ability to supply quality healthcare is limited. As some of you may or may not know, Sanson Urgent Care has closed, forcing our patients to go to our local emergency room time and time again. Being a single mother myself, working a job nine to five, Monday through Friday, I find it very difficult when my child gets sick to find a doctor to take him to without having to take time off work for myself. Unfortunately, this is the same situation a lot of our patients face, which is why our emergency room gets overwhelmed with simple, non-life-threatening illnesses. There is simply nowhere else to go when you or your child gets sick at 6:00 PM. Urgent care versus the ER. Most urgent care clinics offer extended hours on our open seven days a week. Urgent care medical professionals are equipped to respond quickly to provide a variety of non-life-threatening illnesses and injuries, while emergency rooms are life-saving procedures, surgeries, tragic car accidents, et cetera. This is just a list of some of our local CHC patients who have gone to the urgent emergency room, Lompoc Hospital, abdominal pain, hypoglycemia, low blood sugar, high blood sugar, fevers, things that we can handle in the clinic and keep out our patients at the urgent care so that they have the time and more time to provide for tragic and save lives. If we get approved for opening a larger urgent care, we can keep our patients and local citizens out of the ER and relieve them from being inundated of non-emergency patients. We currently only have 12 exam rooms, one MD, one physician assistant, two pediatricians, two health educators, one phlebotomist and one chiropractor. 12 exam rooms. From July of 2017 to June of 2018, CHC Lompoc saw 26,274 patients in one year with 12 exam rooms. We need this bigger building. Our goal is to not expand in size, but expand in services provided such as x-rays, OB-GYN, women's health, in-clinic pharmacy, IV hydrations, and possibly set up specialty physicians such as dermatology, cardiology, INGI. This will increase our need for job opportunity as positions will need to be filled fast. Expanding the clinic will be beneficial for the community, citizens of Lompoc, and citizens of Lompoc for both our CHC and help the Lompoc ER take out the amount of time and work that they have to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, councilman, council members and audience, my name is Airson Julian. I'm the Facility Director of Community Health Centers. Just a few notes, you know, the, right now, we have a 9,000-square-foot building that we're operating in and the proposal is a 28,000-square-foot building. With that size increase, we're going to add 35 additional employees to what we have now, so we're looking at 70 employees. If you factor out the amount of income derived from just that employee base, we're talking about $6 million a year in income. And the folks that do work there are able then to purchase housing, to shop in different stores, to basically survive. We have contracts with SenCal, which provides medical care for low-income folks. They're asking for us today to see an additional 2,000 pediatric patients. We don't have the facility to do that. In fact, we're looking for another place right now, in the interim, until our building is built. So they're asking us to increase those, you know, that patient base. Regarding, if you haven't been to one of our CHC new sites, you need to check it out. You saw up on the rendering out there, those renderings are going to be very nice buildings. When you're putting 13, 14, 15 million dollars into a building, we do not want, you know, a thrift store next to us. I'm sorry, there is need for that, but not where we're located. We're a very professional organization and I employ you to check out our different sites that we have on the central coast. They're top of the line. We have one of the best design groups in the United States working with us. And anything that comes before you in parcel A is going to be top of the line. And we're not going to want, you know, you know, again, any, any entity that's going to degrade us, degrade your services, your community, our services. So we, we ask that you approve this because I think you're going to get far more money than 20,000 a year based on employee spending money, employee housing, and employee just being in the community and providing like the individual was saying, services to the community. So that's all I have and I appreciate, you're really looking at that because 20,000 a year is going to be more, they're made up by the amount of income we're going to bring in by 35 employees. And these aren't, the minimum you're getting is $18 an hour employees. It's not the, you know, it's not a $12 an hour employee, but they're significant, that would be significant income to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilor Mosby.
Mr. Wilkie, would this development have to pay SFE equivalents for park pool? Are they exempt from that as well? Are trying to be exempted from that as well?
Well, that's on single-family homes and single-family residences, so this is not a residential.
Commercial properties paid as well, though.
If they do, then they would, it's not an agreement. So right now, they would, if they file for exemption, they'd have to file for exemption from that as well.
So they wouldn't contribute to our swimming pool as many other commercial properties do as well? So I'm just trying to wrap around everything that we're giving, would potentially be giving up here. I mean, it's not about a project, it's about, you know, I don't know if CHC had an opportunity to read our grand jury report, but again, you know, it complements you on the grand jury report, but there was recommendations for things for us to do to enhance revenues. I know we have 20 positions held open right now approximately, or in that play? Am I correct with that?
It's not as many as we had in April, so it's not 20 anymore.
Down a little bit, but I mean, we're fighting a budgetary issue right now. We did, we just had a lady come up and tell us how our parks weren't, well, two ladies came up earlier tonight, tells us what's not happening in our parks. I mean, we're just asking for an opportunity for what I would consider a fair share. And again, when Cal, or the grand jury makes a recommendation that, as on page 10 of their report, one of the recommendations was to analyze where we can get revenues, identify potential revenue gains, and this is one of those opportunities. So it's like, nobody's attacking the project, this is an opportunity for us to help enhance our general fund revenues, which we, we're in a little bit of a quagmire still, right, Mr. Wilkie?
Yeah, and I believe that's what the pilot was proposing is to be a stopgap until the front property is taxable.
Well, I know that's one of the recommendations, recommendation number two was to do a long as we're, we're providing, because the, the project, the mosaic walk, prior to that, I believe it came to us with an enhancement on the property tax, because we were needing more of the property tax for streets and trees and sidewalk maintenance, if I'm correct, right? On the 50-some-odd units before that, we did that about a year and a half.
I have no idea what was part of that project.
Yeah. Well, that was, one of the things that came before is, because we needed to, you know, in our recommendations, we're trying to enhance our revenue for our general fund. I mean, that's, nobody's trying to attack your project. We're trying, you know, we're going to give you guys something, which is zone change. And we're giving up potentially 50-some-odd houses, and the tax revenue coming from those 50 houses for a zone change from residential to planned commercial development. And what we're asking for is the offset of the tax, property tax revenue that we would receive, which is approximately $20,000, which helps to pay for the street maintenance, and et cetera, et cetera. And nobody even talked about the pool maintenance, which also could have been part of that, because it is.
I have to actually check. I don't think commercial properties pay.
They do.
Residential commercial properties may.
Commercial office does. They pay SFEs, single-family equivalents, they calculate.
Okay.
Mr. Albro, who's not here, but.
Not here, no.
He went through that computation here not too far along ago, maybe one year before last, about how they come up the calculation of the SFE.
All right.
But.
I just don't remember, because I haven't looked at it for a while.
Yeah, I think that's what we're wrapping around. Nobody's opposed to the project, we're just, you know, we are in a situation with our general fund, as the grand jury report states, and we would actually be going against their recommendation if we just threw up our hands. And I think currently, right now, we have 27 or 29% of our multiple-family housing units are with low-income restricted covenants on it, and most of those are exempted from property tax as well. So, it's, it kind of puts us in a situation, and we just went through long negotiations with our police and our fire to enhance their revenues. It's kind of what we decided to do. We needed to put more to them in raises, and we took away from our parks. And you've heard comments about Ryan Park, and the dog show potentially didn't come here because of this and that, and we have another, so I mean, we're, we're not trying to pick on you guys, we're trying to make ourselves solid and whole as well. And in my recommendation before, and I believe the 4-1 vote, was that we needed this money, not just for five years or until you had the front, but we, we need to enhance the general fund revenues for, for much longer than that.
Well, part of the pilot was to have the 20,000 until they developed the front parcel, which could be two years. It doesn't have to be five years, it was, it could be, they could start it next week, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the city attorney said that attachment number two was in perpetuity, right?
The original one, yes.
Attachment two is in perpetuity. And it's not based on $20,000, it's based on a formula that, using the way that the county assesses taxes, property taxes.
Councilor Starbuck.
You know, one of the things that we're not talking about in here is the 55 units of homes that will not be built. What happens is, is now we have 55 less people hooked up to our wastewater, we have 55 units that are not hooked up to, to regular water, we're not picking up trash. These are concerns, because these are rates that are eventually going to have to steadily increase. Even the use out of a 20,000-square-foot building is not going to offset the individual metered rates that residents pay. One of the things that I noticed is somebody, I think you made a comment, that said, "We would not allow any kind of development to happen that would be bad for the city," but you're selling the property, at which point you would lose control of the development, and the city would control it. This, going into, you know, forever, all of a sudden, we're going to have, what if somebody buys this parcel and it sets empty for 15 years? Now, compound your payments going out, 20,000's a bargain at that point. Are you going to negotiate a build time when you sell, or, you know, I mean, there's just so many phrase on this, that it's, it's scary.
Councilor Osborne.
Mr. Halverson, how many approved homes do we have on the books that have not yet been built?
Yes, Councilwoman Osborne, there's not very many. The one that's on the books right now, well, some of you is the project that's coming in very soon. I don't have the exact number as far as all the entitlements, where they're not building like a river terrace, but it's not a lot. Obviously, we have Burton Ranch that hasn't been built, approximately 400 homes, but we are trying to stay positive. We do have some of you in plan check now, and we're moving forward with the CFD for that, but as far as building, there isn't a lot of building right now.
Correct, but there have been developments that have been approved, and they've just had their permits extended, because they haven't sold to a builder to actually build it out. So, this particular piece of property hasn't had anything come forward at all to have any sort of proposal in recent years to build out the proposed 55 homes.
That's correct.
So, it is set empty, so we haven't been collecting on those in any form, in any way. So, first off, I want to thank CHC for continuing to come back to the table and continuing to have the discussion regarding something that you don't, didn't have to even consider in the first place. Once you heard we wanted to discuss pilot, you could have said, "Thanks, but no thanks," and moved outside our city limits and built somewhere else, and forced our residents to drive elsewhere. So, thank you. Thank you for coming back to the table and realizing that there is an intermediary area to come to, and, and working on that with staff. So, I personally think we need to move this forward, because if we're going to be a business-friendly community, hammering this out constantly, after asking for a pilot, and then coming back and finding something that meets everybody in the middle, is kind of painful for everybody, that, that's a success. And we need to move forward on this, because showing we're a business-friendly community doesn't mean we hammer a nonprofit to the point where they're put out of business. It doesn't mean we hurt our residents by not making sure expanded services are available for them. So, this, while yes, is impacting the homes not being built, those homes haven't been built, weren't going to be built, this is going to get built. This is moving forward. This is employment, this is expanded employment, this is salaries that when those homes in some of you are built, when potential developers start trying to resell their developments again, additional available buyers exist, because they are employed and employed well. So, it is damaging to our community, it is damaging to us to ignore this opportunity to move something forward, which granted, doesn't solve every problem, doesn't answer every question, but I think it moves the project forward in a good manner. And again, it's painful for everybody. It's not the perfect solution, but it provides an answer, moves it forward, allows the project to move forward, allows people to have jobs, and potentially buy those homes that are being built. That's where I stand on this.
Okay, okay. Keep it down. Councilor Mosby.
So, I was just wondering if the Councilmember Osborne, if you're proposing order to be business-friendly, we need to exempt all new businesses from, from property tax?
Absolutely not. This is a nonprofit, and this nonprofit is willing to come back and do pilot tax, which is something they didn't have to do. So, again, you're putting them through twice as much, if not three times, the process that you ask any regular business to do, and they go above and beyond themselves. So, again, I'd rather show examples of how we can work with groups, and if they come up with a creative idea and want to work for us, we're business-friendly. So, no, I'm not proposing that for any business that comes into town. I'm saying, they've made an exception for us. They're willing to go through a process that no one else has done in this community for a nonprofit that doesn't have to do this.
Actually, others have done this, and there are other pilot programs in the city in other projects, there are others out there. But the, in this case here, how, how do you propose we offset the potential approximately $20,000 to the general fund that wouldn't, would be coming in, that, that wouldn't be coming in if, if we go forward with their, their recommendation? Where do you think the money can come from?
They are providing the income until the commercial real estate is built out, and then it pays taxes into it, and will probably pay more than 20,000 into commercial property tax. So, it's not my job to solve a problem that doesn't exist at the moment, because those 55 homes aren't about to be built. We're not choosing which project.
No, it's, it's not, it's not about that, the, the difficulty that we have currently in Lompoc is that we're probably somewhere in one and a half to $2 million of tax revenue that we're not gaining, because over the years, councils before us have been very, almost too open to this, and puts us in the precarious position where we are by exempting properties from property tax. And what, they're not, it's not like they're not getting something for what we're doing, they're asking for a zone change from residential to PCD. So, they're asking for something, they're getting something. And it's our opportunity, and we have the ability, to, to defend the public, defend the, the city pension funds by proposing something like this. When, when this runs out, it's another 20 grand that's gone, another 20 grand that could have been spent at, at River Park, or could have been spent at Ryan Park. So, it's, it's money that's, that's, once it's lost, it's lost. And this is an opportunity for.
You can't lose money you don't have in the first place. So, again, we're not getting this 20,000 until they actually pay it, because that piece of property is not currently paying us 20,000.
That's, that's what the philosophy has been before, and that's where we are, we're in a position we are right now.
Well, I think you've pointed out, we have a difference in philosophy.
Councilor Vega.
My question for Brian. Brian, you know, under the exemption of this nonprofit, it seems to me like, in the event that this project did not move forward, and we have property taxes on, on the bare land that's there, it sounds like if it did not go forward, they would also be able to file for an exemption to not have to pay property taxes at all. Is that correct? That's part of, in part of our staff report?
I would like to defer to Brad on that, but I, I just don't know. I, I do know that if it doesn't develop in the front, they would just have to continue to pay that.
Yeah, in the front parcel. And I would like to mention that, you know, it's not about the project. This project is, is a wonderful project. What we're talking about is a revenue stream that we're responsible for refilling the general fund on a regular basis. I think what, what happens is, we have a lot of people over here that will, whether it's city employees, whether it's residents, whoever lives here, it's on the tax base here, is going to suffer in one way or shape or form if we don't do and live up to our responsibility. I think what happens here with, with, looking forward here, we also have an application, which Ms. Gallivan, Ms. Gallivan said, that we apply for LAFCO for the Bailey Corridor moving forward. So, looking forward, if we look at Western Lee Movement, that is also something that creates activity that will actually attract, yes, the property's been sitting there for many, many years. But in the, in the event of something new happening, looking forward, I think we're really close, depending on the LAFCO decision, and we have several property owners that do want to develop out there, I think that'll automatically show some movement in Lompoc. So, I think that our tax base is so important, that I don't think we can afford, at the 29% level of, in this report here, that says we have about five times more affordable and low-income housing than all the other cities around our area, so it's not really, it's really unequitable. It's not about the services, it's about the revenue and the income that we can, that we're actually potentially giving away. So, my comment is, I think that I would stick to the attachment number two, the original proposal that asked for, you know, that actually asked for, you know, a longer length of time for the tax base to be paid back, and the amounts.
Okay, I just want to remind the council that, you know, we all talk about improving the economy here. Once we fill these homes, we have to get people to live in, move into these homes. One of the things are actually, there's three things that the public looks at when they go to move to a new community. One is public safety. Is it a safe community to move into? The next is education. Is there quality education for the children when they moved here? The third thing, and this isn't in, in order right now, but is healthcare. Is there access to affordable, quality healthcare in the community? And I worked in the healthcare community for 40-plus years. Lompoc has a nice healthcare system, but it is becoming overburdened. The young lady talked about the emergency room. If you've ever been to the emergency room, you may have to wait hours to be looked at, because there are so many people in there. So, I think having the balance of adding a good quality component of healthcare to our community is as important to look at as the tax dollars we may or may not be losing. Councilor Vega, you talked about the Bailey Corridor, bringing in those extra homes. I'm hoping that, you know, you're right on that, because that could certainly, more than compensate for the homes that we'd be losing here. This project, I believe, was approved, originally approved, not this project, but the housing project, I believe was originally approved when I was on the planning commission back in 2006 or '07. It's been vacant ever since then, and it could continue to become vacant, or remain vacant for a long time. So, I just wanted to consider the, what the public looks at when they look to move to community, and that is quality, affordable healthcare.
Councilor Mosby.
I was just wondering if, if Councilmember Vega was making a motion on that previous.
Yeah, if we're set up to make a motion, I'd like to, I, I'm prepared to make a motion. I'd like to make, make a motion that we stick to our previous agreement and our previous ask, attachment two is provided in the staff report, and that we do not approve and move forward with this recommendation of approving this project at this time, because I believe it's in the city's best interest for us to come back to the table and, and negotiate on our tax base.
Okay, that's a motion. Do we have a second?
No, a second then.
Moved in second, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I just make a comment?
Sure.
I'm not sure exactly if the motion was to approve both the attachment two and adopt the ordinance. If it was to also adopt the ordinance, I would recommend that we find out whether or not CHC is willing to sign that agreement, because if they're not willing to sign that agreement, you'll have adopted an ordinance that would permit the, the development that's before you to go forward, but without a developer.
I got you. Well, you know, city attorney, I see the choices here, A, B, C, or D, so I'd like to refer to one of the choices here. So, it basically looks like we're denying the proposed zone change and general plan amendment. And if there's someone else that would like to put an add-on to and provide other direction, I'd ask them to do so now.
You're doing a denial of, well, if you go from this document, it goes to one, two, three, four.
Yeah, I got you, I'm looking at our agenda.
So, you wanted to move forward with number two, and if number two was signed, you would approve number one, but, or, you would approve the adoption of the ordinance predicated on the signing of attachment two. Is that something that could be done that way? Is there?
Yes, I believe that, that would provide payment of.
Mr. City Attorney, could you help him with the wording on that? I think we understand what he wants to move, but I don't think he has the words to make the motion.
I guess, I guess what we'd need to do is, we need to change, we need to change section four of the ordinance, assuming that there's a majority in the council that wants to do what's being suggested, and, and this is what I'm understanding the suggestion is, is to authorize staff to sign attachment two and adopt ordinance 1647-18, but we need to amend section four so that it doesn't become effective 30 days after adoption, which is normal. It only becomes effective 30 days after the attachment two is signed by CHC.
I don't believe that's what I meant. I meant that, you know, by, by approving half of it doesn't solve the whole of it. So, I'm going to be real clear here. It sounds like by approving the ordinance, we're approving the zoning change, but we're not, but we're leaving it in lieu of the pilot program. Is that correct? Is that what you're proposing, sir?
I wasn't proposing anything. I was trying to.
Well, I'm following your lead, so I'm just repeating what you said.
What I said was, if the council wants to authorize staff to sign attachment two, and at the same time, adopt ordinance 1647, then my recommendation would be to modify section four of eight, of 1647, to have that ordinance be effective 30 days after CHC signs attachment two.
Got you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, Councilmember Vega?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fighting with myself on this, approving the zone change and coming back, as long as nothing's approved as a whole, I would be in favor of that. Councilman Mosby, was that clear enough, or is that still a little vague?
The zone change wouldn't go through until after attachment two was signed.
And that's, that's what I want clarified over here. Yeah, that's what my intent was. Yes, sir. Okay, so the zone change would not be approved and go through unless the pilot. Okay, so the zone change would not be approved and go through unless the pilot program was approved.
The zone change would be approved. The ordinance approving it wouldn't be effective. So you're, you're approving the ordinance, you're adopting the ordinance, but the ordinance is going to have a provision that says the ordinance doesn't become effective unless attachment two is signed by the city and CHC.
Thank you for the clarification, Joe. Yes, sir. Yes.
By the city clerk, is that clear to you? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And just for the record, so that everyone is clear, the motion is to authorize staff to sign attachment two, which is the pilot agreement that includes an perpetuity payment of, in lieu of taxes, and adopt ordinance 1647 with a modification to the effective date, which is right now 30 days after adoption. Instead of it saying that, it's going to say 30 days after attachment two is signed by both parties.
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Let's vote. I pass three to him. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to written communications. None?
Nothing.
Okay. Oral communications. This is your last time you speak to us for up to two minutes on any item that can come before this council. And seeing no one move towards the microphone. Dwayne, are you coming forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's Dwayne Holm, I'm a citizen of Lompoc. I just want to let you know what I seen tonight is one of the poorest setup of the council members I've ever seen. The discussion you had, you had a group of people who want to build something in this community and bring new information in, and all you did is send them out the door. I think I'm very, very dissatisfied the way they planned it tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Tim Becker. I've been here for just over three and a half or four months from having lived in Southern California for over 25 years. I love it here, but I have to say, I'm really disturbed that we're losing jobs. I would, I would not be surprised if these people go away and say, you know, oh, let's look at solving, how about Buellton and these other cities? What I would like to see is what's the money that we have lost as a city for the last 10, 15 years that this place has not been developed? Tax money, revenue spending. I'd also like to hear, okay, what are the dollars that the people in the 9,000 square foot facility have earned and what could that money over the next three to five years, 10 years be to offset zero, which is what we're getting out of that other property? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public or oral communication, and we're going to go to council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilman Vega.
Nothing to report, sir.
Councilman Osborne.
I attended the Library Commission as part of the assigned rotation and acted as mayor pro tem at both Carver Hall's Veterans Breakfast Were, the city awarded recognition to the five vets that were being honored that day. I also appeared with the Regional Santa Barbara County Mayor and City Managers Meeting as mayor pro tem and was invited as a city council member to participate in the local Valley Cannabis Association mixer and, and hear their concerns about how that's moving forward. I want to thank the Beautification Commission for the really hard work that they did this past weekend on the project at D Street by the Water Treatment Plan. It looks fantastic. I drove by yesterday. And congratulate the Santa Rita Hills Vet Nurse Association for another amazing Wine and Fire Event that brings a ton of tourists to our community that stay in our local hotels, eat dinner in our local restaurants, buy gas, and also shop at the local wineries and other events. Remind the public that Wild West Pizza is participating in the Hancock Promise Day and that any pizza ordered tomorrow, if you mention the Hancock Promise for Lompoc, they will give 50% of their proceeds back to the Promise Program. And I challenge my fellow council members to consider sponsoring a student with the one-year, one-student commitment. And a reminder to the public that City Hall will be closed on 9/3 for Labor Day.
Thank you. Councilman Mosby.
I represented the city of Lompoc at last Thursday's Air Pollution Control District meeting and as well attended with Councilmember Osborne at the cannabis gathering on last Friday.
Councilor Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Okay, thank you. And I attended many meetings, but none at city expenses, so I have nothing to report. And with that, this city council meeting is adjourned to our regularly meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, 6:30 PM, September 4th, the day after my wife's birthday. Thank you and good night. Thank you and good night.